Good morning. Today is Monday, March 3rd, 2015. Nonchalant Attorney General Commissioner Tore. Today we have Mr. Allen Porcolfo from Secarrel Hills. He's going to do the indication. If you'll please stand. Anybody standing by the bridge?
Father, we want to thank you and we want to praise you for the privilege of living here. We ask you that you would be present today. Lord, we ask for your presence. We ask for your prominence. We pray that you would give this court great wisdom. Lord, would you give these men and women the wisdom from God? We ask you to help them and guide them. We ask you for their protection. We ask you that you would bless them and bless their families. Father, we ask you to take care of our law enforcement, our firemen, and that you would watch over them. Thank you so much for the privilege, Father. Great is our God. Christ me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the city of Texas, one state under God, one indivisible.
Okay, first thing on the agenda today is approval of minutes for February 23rd, 2015, Potter County Commissioners Court meeting, as well as March 3rd, 2015, the special Potter County Commissioners Court meeting.
Make a motion that we accept the minutes for February 23rd and March 3rd as presented.
Second.
Have a motion in second, all in favor, raise your hand. Five, zero. Number two, vouchers to consider and act upon approval of payment of vouchers processed by the county insurance office for the period of February 18th, 2015 through March 4th, 2015. Checks number 160823 through 161130. And wire transfer number 511 through 520 in the amount of $3,209,964.36.
I move that we approve of the vouchers. Second.
Have a motion in second, all in favor, raise your hand. Number three, the second annual Potter County Government Day to consider and act upon the use of funds for the awards and recognition budget in an amount not to exceed $450 to cater lunch for students participating in government day activities on April 27th. Carrie.
Yes, as a committee, we would like to ask the court to fund the lunch for students to stay at the we're expecting 76 students and 12 to 14 sponsors.
Okay, who's going to be them?
The ones that are prepared to do that.
Come on. Have a motion.
I move that we allow the use of funds for rewards and recognition budget in an amount not to exceed $450 to cater lunch for students participating in government day activities on April 27th.
Second.
A motion in second, all in favor, raise your hand, please.
And Judge, if I can, just on that item, just a quick informational lead will be in Santa Fe building in the auditorium, April 27th. So that's the second court in May. And those in the audience should be receiving information from the committee about the date. And we have the logistical schedule, at least the preliminary out, so you should see that.
So this amount is from the last one we had, right? The number of students.
The number of students participating, yes.
Did y'all do this last year?
Commissioner Moore, do you mind also, Judge, if we mentioned that you will receive a letter as well asking all the partners and elected officials to contribute? And so you know for that either today or tomorrow. But just to give you a heads up, the nap will help us with the cost of food and the day. So, it's up. Thank you.
Okay, number four, insurance report, recognizing insurance fund report. Category of not staying, we don't want to talk about. So recognized. Number five, elections to consider and approve proportional budget for determining party affiliation for judges and all judges at vote centers. Good morning.
Good morning.
For you as well.
You guys received a lengthy resolution for how we would determine party affiliation for judges at votes. This particular method is what is recommended by the Secretary of State. I have not received a letter from Gentry saying that he is in favor, but I have received verbal to him that he was in favor of it. Also had a letter from Tonya saying that she is in favor of it. And as a vote center committee, we have talked about it and the vote center committee endorsed this method for determining judges. Does anyone have any questions about it?
Can you help explain this method and maybe how it's different than what we do today?
Okay, what we do today, right now, we're in precinct voting. And in precinct voting, you look at how that particular precinct voted in the previous gubernatorial election. And the party that received the most votes would be the party for the precinct judge in future elections. Where the party that received the second most votes would be the alternate judge. As an example, and I'll use 125, which would be Bivens. They voted for Greg Abbott by the majority. So in a precinct situation, that judge would be a Republican until the next time we have a gubernatorial election. And the alternate judge would come from the Democratic Party because they received the second, I suppose. This particular method is called the proportional method. And it's basically, you can, you define an area that you want to use and you look at the proportion of the votes and how those votes were cast. So it's not necessarily a winner-take-all, it's a proportion. So as an example, as you see on the last page of what I gave you guys, and I'll use JP 2 as an example. If you took all of the voting precincts located in JP 2, 69% of the votes that were cast, were cast for Greg Abbott, the Republican candidate in the previous election. And 31% were cast for Wendy Davis, the Democratic candidate. Therefore, 69% of our judges would be Republican and 31% of the judges would be Democratic. So in an ideal situation, if we had three vote centers that were located in that particular JP, then two of them would have a Republican lead and one would have a Democratic lead. You would still have the other person, your alternate judge would come from the alternate party. But this is just exactly, this is what our previous election looks like under this scenario.
I move that we approve the proportional method for determining party affiliation of judges and alternate judges.
Okay, I have a motion in second, all in favor, raise your hand.
Thank you.
And number six, Open Meetings Act and Public Information Act certificates. This is just to recognize, since it is mandated, that I did take that course when I was in Austin for the open meetings and overheads. Such an interesting course. So anyway, so that was just to recognize, so I did that. Number seven, local government corporations to provide an update on the local government corporation.
So we'll have some help here from our IT department. And your screen should shift. What I'm going to be sharing with you, and this is just an update from our last LGC meeting. As you know, I like to bring that information back to the court for obvious reasons, to make sure we're all in the loop. The latest conversation that was communicated was the renderings, if you will, of the hotel. So the presentation that I have today is very quick, other than I want to give you some of those visual images. And I'll just walk around and make sure. So we'll just move here from slide to slide. I'm in that more visual than the elements that I want to discuss. If we can maybe just pause here for just a minute. This gives you a little bit of a visual around the proposed parking garage to the left, the existing Globe New Center to the right. And then the footprint, as it has been described. You'll notice on the south side, really with this circular kind of drive here at the bottom of the screen, you'll see a rendering for that here in just a moment. And what's switching here is again, the footprint. This is a little bit of the, thank you, the footprint of not only the retail space. So that's the first box, if you will, towards the bottom degree. There's retail space that will be included, and then the hotel footprint. Keep moving through that. This is the square footage as it relates to the ground floor, some of the retail space, the levels of the hotel, and then the bedroom mix. 80% of that being king and, or I'm sorry, 80 beds, so 35%. And then 65% being clean to accommodate the family travelers. So we'll keep going through. That's looking directly at what the rendering and the expected image of the hotel. So if we can pause right here, one of the questions received in the audience for this particular image was the dimensions of the hotel. So you'll notice the top of the hotel is very square in nature, very defined lines. And as it sits next to the Globe New Center, that is more of a curved building. And so the question in the audience that was received to the LGC is kind of why? Why would that be? And what was shared with the LGC was that this building would have its own identity. And, but if you'll notice that it's really kind of stepped back. It's not on the direct image, or I'm sorry, the direct line of the street. So the conversation was that it would be its own building, but really kind of a step back from the Globe New Center and really giving that presence and the visual traffic down the street so that you still see the Globe New Center. That was a question that got asked in the audience about how easy it would be to commute to the Globe New Center and the parking and make sure that's a good walkability traffic. So we can keep moving here. That's the circular pattern that I spoke to on one of the first images. It really just kind of a drive-through where the valet would take over and move to the parking garage. It's an embassy suite. You'll notice that is the hotel. The image to the right that you'll notice, it is a, it's just a depiction right now. Part of the conversation was that could be a digital image used for some marketing, that kind of thing. And then here's just a quick snapshot of some of the green space that's being discussed and how to use that on the opposite end of the building. So that's the final slide in terms of renderings what we have today at the hotel. We're expecting to see some renderings on the parking garage. So as we see that, I'll continue and bring that back to the court. Any questions on that?
Okay, number eight, continuing education to recognize traditional remedies completion that would require 16-hour annual continuing education requirement in 2014 as stated in section 81.20025 of the government code. So recognized. And remind, Texas Office Sheriff's Sale to consider and act upon the approval of Sheriff's Sale properties. Amendment has already been received. Only chartered sheriffs. Good morning. This is just our annual trustee sales. Everything go well?
Yes.
A lot of people try to give a dumping.
On some properties, yes.
Do you tell all those kids?
Yeah.
So Sherri, I do have a question. The way the cover sheet reads is the bidder who qualified for the purchase has been highlighted, but the copy we have is not a highlighted copy. So I don't know if that needs to be part of the motion, Commissioner.
It's just a.
It's the bold?
Yeah.
Okay, right. Thank you.
Have a motion, please. I'll make a motion that we approve Sheriff's Sale properties. One second. Motion in second, all in favor, raise your hand. Zero. Thank you. Number 10, Act of Producers Co-ops. To consider and act upon improving the plan for co-op measures in number one, block 1A, block 40, which is on town side of Bushel. I do not see anybody from that office. Dave, can you speak to this at all? Or?
It has the approvals required to. I think the approval accord at this point is pretty much kind of a ministerial act. They've got, they're hooked into water, so water's not an issue. When that question came up, everybody else, I believe, has approved it. I think I see County Health Department gets in, it's making, and double checks the water system. If I'm not mistaken, in this situation. So it's ready for the court's approval.
Is this just kind of taking over that road that we have? I'll be honest with you, I don't know. But I'm actually sure.
Or not, because I thought you were going to be here today. I don't know.
What's your thought, Commissioner? I don't have a problem with it because we already know that's what it is, but I don't.
What road are you referring to? I'm asking because they called our office to get copies of some stuff.
Well, I can't remember the name of the road. It went from 20th to.
There's a section that.
19th to 20th, there was a little section I can't remember.
Is it Meiser?
I'm not sure.
I believe it was Wells. Wells?
Yes, yes. Sounds like Meiser. He did call our office to get copies of some prior resolutions that were passed through Commissioners Court where y'all had abandoned some of those properties and so.
I didn't talk to you at all, other than about the water issue. So I don't know about.
I mean, that's all, that's all I know about it, that he did call to get some copies of some of that stuff.
There's a Willis Street on here, top of the page.
Okay, Willis, is that right?
That's closer than.
Okay. I can't remember, but that's all I remember, so I can't really, I don't see anything.
Okay, it says here, it's vacated. We vacated Wells. W E L L S.
Where did you say?
So it's just a.
I read the.
Right here, it's Wells. Right below the black.
Oh, I'm going to think. I'm not thinking.
Yeah, there's. And I think that's all it is.
Wells and a Wells.
Well, it's a well.
Just joking. Do we want to do this today, or do y'all want to wait until this year?
Co-op.
Anybody?
I would go ahead and prove it. I don't, I mean, I don't see any harm in it. I mean, really, there's nothing bad. We're going to vacate that road anyway.
I think you already have.
Basically, uh, co-op producers, I think we've had some. I do recall vacating a section of road that the co-op was going to take over. And I think this is just a continuation of that project. So I think, I think you have already vacated that road.
Yes, we.
Even if you have this little less road, we don't have to maintain it. So I.
So I can remember us vacating.
Yeah.
So I think, yeah, other than that, there really is not a regular issue either. So I believe it's approved.
Move we approve the plan for co-op producers in number one, block 1A, block 40, regional township of Bushel.
The second.
Might as well put council out.
A motion in second, all in favor, raise your hand.
I'll say we don't have enough information to make an educated decision at this point.
Okay, number 11, District Attorney's Office to consider and act upon request from Randall Sims, Potter County Attorney Attorney to add a position to his office for temporary full-time pay for salary benefits to be paid from that office.
Commissioner, when the Michael Morton Act came through, we didn't have any employees or doing anything like that. Still, we're trying to work on electronic system, help us get things going. What's, what's taking place now with my employees is Celia Cox is going to be retiring in the near future. Veronica Cox will take her place. And through the course of them, so I'll be needing to hire someone in the near future. Probably sometime in June. If number 15 goes as we hope today, we're going to be needing some assistance with. I want to bring someone in that will be able to be there as part of the implementation process. So when Celia leaves, then we're not having to train somebody separate from the rest of us, basically. And personally, the position I really kind of want to do is, there has to be two applications, specialists, is what they refer to in the text here. And that's basically people that can add people to roads, take them off roads, modify the roads, change the look of the screen if we need that done, some things like that. Look at it and go, oh wait, that's not something we need to do. That needs to be sent to Jason or his people, or it needs to be sent to the people in Austin to take care of. So we have to have two of those. So I have someone in mind that's actually working as a IT person currently right now that would love to come to work for my office. And so that's the reason I'm asking you all for the position, so I can get that person in there. So then they can be, go through the training process with us and they'll actually have, become one of those application specialists slash something else too. I'm sure in my office, probably secretary, something like that. And then when Celia retires, I'll go over there and. Kind of way I've got somebody that actually gets trained, and we get trained, we don't have to go through all that again. And actually, that person's probably going to be understanding of some of the stuff that's going to be happening. I know that I will have. And some of the ability to be. So that's what I'm.
So Randall, it's written as a temporary full-time employee with salary benefits to be paid from your office, is that correct?
Correct.
Is there an estimate of dollar amount of the salary and benefits for that position?
We haven't talked that yet because I haven't got permission to argue that.
But I just mean in terms of the proposal, what's being discussed, so we're aware.
I'm going to guess we're going to pay somewhere around the $38,000. And then Carrie and I have talked some numbers about the insurance, that sort of thing. On yearly rate, not on annual.
Then how long do you foresee this temporary full-time position being open? Well, after the move and the shifts that are happening?
And after, after all those moves and shifts happen, then we're done.
But I mean, are you foreseeing six months, eight months, a year?
I think probably about in June as well, so. That's.
I'm just thinking here, if this position would be evaluated at budget time next year, or if you expect this position to be done at that point?
This position would be done in July.
It'll just fall into.
Yeah, whatever, I'll leave it vacant and for him to turn it over. Since I've left that position. And if I feel like I need to come back and ask for it, for some reason, once we get in all this other stuff.
A motion?
I make a motion that we approve a temporary full-time employee with salary and benefits to be paid from the district attorney's budget.
Have a second.
Sir.
A motion in second, all in favor, raise your hand. Here's your question.
Hold on, hold on, hold on. I think the language, I would like a little more clarity, I think, in the language. I think we need to say, we have an idea of funding. Because I think by saying budget, it's not clear to me whether that's coming from the general fund. To. I think Randall's intention is his budget, so. That's good, that's fine.
I'll restate that motion. I make a motion that we accept adding a temporary full-time employee salary and benefits to be paid from the office, or the district attorney's office for generated. I'm curious. Office-generated budget.
Funds.
Funds. Do you get that?
Yes.
Sorry. Thanks, Randall.
Okay, number 12, Central Advisory City County Health District to consider and act upon the appointment of the following, J.K. Carlisle, Board of Health for three, your term, and Doris Thompson, Board of Health for three, your term. I got a memo from, from the, in their office asking that we reappoint these two people. They've been on them for a long time. There was a question as to whether they both live in Potter County. Doris Thompson lives in Potter County. Dr. Carlisle has probably been both Randall and Potter. So they can call and fight for that. And he's been on the board for, since the 80s.
I would like to make a motion to approve the both persons, J.K. Carlisle and Doris Thompson, to the board. Sir.
Motion in second, all in favor, raise your hand. Number 13, Texas Pancreas Centers to consider and act upon their reappointment. Mr. Larry Adams, who is the U.C. Board of Trustees. Same thing here in our letter from them asking that we reappoint. Larry, he's been on the board and has asked to be reappointed. And so they've thought it to us, and he does with my public campaign. Any motion? I have a motion. Name is second.
Thank you, sir.
I'll go with Kelly. So we have a motion in second, all in favor, raise your hand, please.
And Judge, I would like to ask as it relates to these boards and appointment, if we could get on some type of schedule so that our appointees are at least coming to report back to the court. Not anything intrusive on their calendar, but two times a year, whatever you see appropriate, especially as I see these appointments for the health district and mental health. I mean, those are very hot topics as it relates to Potter County and the state. I think it's good governance that this commission has the authority to appoint the individuals as a report back.
Okay. I won't see any motive. Okay, number 14, Texas Department of Family Protective Services, Title 4E Contract Amendment. Consider and act upon amendment to the contract for reimbursement with 2D FPS requiring the county to use the E-Verify system to validate staff availability, eligibility.
If E-Verify, I gave you a little printout of the internet. The system is the one that you use to make sure people you're hiring are qualified immigrants or, you know, citizen, non-citizen necessarily, but have qualified to work in the United States. And so the governor issued proclamation to conform with new federal regulations, which makes every contractor basically comply with E-Verify system. So this is a minor amendment to our reimbursement contract with, for our office, with the Department of Family Protective Services for the attorney and the paralegal that we have doing services with, and both of whom I assure you are qualified to work in the United States. But so it's really an amendment that doesn't have any, doesn't affect us, but we're all required to sign all of them.
Dave, I do have a question as it relates to that. So this E-Verify system, is this a system now that we'll be using for our subcontractors or?
Yeah, we don't hold these contractors. It's, but, but since we are a contractor within the state, we have to sign the amendment. And we don't, in our, our work, the only people that work, that do work under this contract are our attorney and paralegal. So we don't have any, this is not going to change our life, frankly, whatsoever.
But, but to that point, to the attorney and paralegal that fall within this contract?
Yeah.
Is this E-Verify system required to have on file? It indicates on here, upon request, contractor, which I'm assuming would be us, must provide an electronic or hard copy screenshot that confirmation obtained with this E-Verify case management.
I think we already do that.
We do that.
Yes, we've been using E-Verify for in excess of three years. So I would predict a guess at our five years.
And that's part of our record keeping to be able to provide this. Okay. Thank you.
I move that we approve the amendment to contract for reimbursement with the Texas Department of Family Protective Services, requiring the county to use E-Verify system to validate staff eligibility. Sir.
My motion in second, all in favor, raise your hand. I have the, this contract, Dave, that has the law judge's name on it.
Okay.
Do we need to have them send it again, or scratch it out, or how do we need to do it?
Do that however you want to do that, so.
Rather than not scratch it out.
Yeah, let's just ask them to, I'll just ask them to send us over. I'll, I'll do that.
Okay. Okay, number 15, tax share agreements to consider. Okay, number fifteen, tech share agreements, to consider an active upon approving the following project agreements and budgets.
Um, this is, this is really an extension of the meeting we had last week. This is the, the final vote on whether you'll approve the projects that were brought before you. I have this broken down in, in three sections. Um, section A is the master in local agreement, that has to be approved before any of the other sections can be approved, so that'll be, if you decide to take action, that'll be, need to be separate. And then I've got the two projects broken out, if you can see, and so if, if you want to move forward with, with them, both of those agreements have to be approved. Just pointing out, the implementation agreements, those are actually sole source agreements, legally, and the reason is, is because that's not an in-local agreement with other government entities, that's a contractor agreement directly with tech share, and so it has to be a sole source agreement, because there's no one else that can install or implement their own software. You just can't, I mean, that, it is what it is, so I'm asking you to approve that as the sole source, but the actual resource sharing addendums, those are interlocal, because we're, we're cooperating with other counties to do that, so. Um, I did talk to Charles Gray, who spoke last week, and he wanted me to inform you that Dallas County JPs have now approached him about looking at the tech share courts JP project, just like we are, and he thinks that we're pretty interested in moving forward. Also, he forgot to mention, uh, the team, the implementation team for tech share courts JP, uh, those are actually three people they hired from AMCAD when they went out, and those are the same three people that installed that system in Bear County when they put it up, so he just wanted me to make that, I think he forgot to say that last week, so... And that's, that's really all I have, if you all have any questions over the contract, I can try to answer them, I gave you the same kind of, the same contract overview sheet as you had last week, so...
I do have a question as it relates to the tech share prosecutor package, the amount listed here, Randall, I want to confirm that none of those dollars have shifted, you indicated three hundred and fifty thousand to offset that expense, is that still correct?
That's correct, that's the paper I have.
Carrie, what is the budget amount that we have, right now? For all of them, okay.
Still make this a little short, so we give a little more... So... I was speaking aloud, there's, of course, um, understand that we're not on the project package, and the, 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 they gave that up to, to handle that, but the JP package, is that something that, that mandated, that we need to look at right now, we must look at right now, or can we, uh, uh, hold off on that? Or is that something that would...
There are no mandates that I'm aware of. The JP's, they're not trying to be any mandates for...
No, it's just, we're trying to get in line, like he said, Dallas, especially, to get on board, Dallas getting on board, our information right being two or another, so...
But, but at some point, baggage is gonna disappear. That's what you're using right now.
Right.
So how long is it gonna be before baggage is...
When Roland, Roland, Roland stated one time that he would see the projects, or he would stay without retiring, till the projects got, went through, but that's not gonna be it, it's ever. I can't, as, as long as we're moving forward, I believe, I'll stay, if something is put on hold, we have no idea.
So then the question is, Caroline Jewell, how much money to put aside for your, whatever you're gonna choose, correct?
Right.
Do we, we don't know yet, okay.
I guess I'm having some difficulties with that, because, and we have the right to change whatever the heck we've done before, but, the last meeting in November, we agreed to, and Caroline was the one that offered the eighty-two thousand dollars to hire somebody, and both district and county clerk agreed to let us write that internally. Now, if it takes two more months to figure out if we want to do something, what's gonna happen to the person right now that's writing, writing that, probably, they're gonna work for two months and then just throw them off, but, I don't know, I think we either have to decide soon on that, like immediately, or go with what we decided earlier.
Well, I told Jason that, well, there's only one person hired right now, the second person has not been hired, but I said, even under those circumstances, we're gonna have to have someone that will be helping with the implementation and conversion, and I'd like to have someone that I felt like was dedicated to our project. So I was not taking back eighty thousand dollars.
You, you were right.
I was not taking back the eighty thousand dollars.
So what's gonna happen in the meantime, are they gonna continue to ride towards your program?
Right now, they, they are continuing a, you know, for our scanning that we're doing right now, they're, they're doing a stopgap where they're, we're having barcodes, and we're also, they're also changing all our images from TIF to PDF.
So I'd like to interject a couple of comments here, as it relates to the prosecutor package and the JP package, and the district clerk and our county clerk, so with our budget at one point one million, Randall's offset for the prosecutor package roughly leaves four hundred thousand in terms of that expense, that's not including the capital cost, the hardware that I know is separated out. My opinion is that we should wait on this JP package, at least until we have clarity of what the district clerk and county clerk will look like, and I would agree with your urgency, Commissioner Church, because we do want to support that. I do think it is very presumptuous of, of us to move with these two line items, that really takes the entire budget, without us knowing what will happen in the clerk's division, especially in terms of, as it relates to the mandates, and, and we want to be able to have money in that budget to offset that this fiscal year.
I guess, yeah, the thing that concerns me is that we do have a local data advisory board that came back to this body and recommended that we go the way that we're headed here with tech share and, and writing the other one internally, so I don't know why there's been this big change all of a sudden without necessarily the approval of that local data advisory board.
From the last meeting presentation, I was part of, I guess I was a little bit confused as to, uh, the, I guess the effective, the recommendation from the LDA, I wasn't very convinced that, that they were actually recommending which package? Oh, the, uh, the JP package.
The LDA was recommending the JP package? And, um, from, from my recollection of that conversation too, I think the conversation started with prosecutor package, and the JP package got discussed, since it was the same vendor that was being vetted out, so that kind of got rolled in, in terms of the JP package and the prosecutor, but I, I'm only speaking to where we sit today, and the dollars, and the budget, and what's mandated, and so again, I do think it is presumptuous of us to take the entire budget, recognizing that we still have unknown elements in the clerk's division. Go ahead, Judge.
The, the entire time from when it started, we knew that one point one million was not the entire budget. The entire budget, when this first started, when it went to the, what are they, R, R P, R P P, was around two point five million, so we knew one point one was not the entire budget, for the entire county. And I, I've got the paper to show that, if y'all won't see that. So, with the prosecutor at seven hundred, some odd, seven hundred and fifty thousand, the JP's at seven hundred seventeen or eighteen, twenty thousand, we knew that still was not the entire budget, and no matter what happens, when the clerk withdrew and decided to go with Jason doing their, their package internal, that relieved some of that budget, knocking it back down, or breaking it back down, so, we knew it was a multi-year commitment, the first year was three hundred thousand, the last year, and this current budget, we're at eight hundred thousand again, and then they were looking, it was wanting to look at putting in more in next year's budget. People call it, the problem is, is, at some point in time, we have to make a decision when to purchase, and the reason that the JP and the prosecutor came together is because, number one, they're both coming from the same entity, which, you know, if, if they decide they want to go with Tyler somewhere down the road, it will probably come from this same entity, because they have the text contract with Tyler, and, uh, so that's why ours was coming together, because that, only other thing left was their package or the, I guess the district judge, and the other judge's package also, but that's never been discussed, I mean, uh, so, until they decide, but their decision has nothing to do with the prosecutor package, it has nothing to do with the JP package, there's, it's a separate package, so, that's, that's why these two are coming at issue now, and we know there's not funds there, I mean, there's gonna have to be, because we were planning on funds coming again out of next year's budget, but if this gets pushed through today, they all have to be there, so, you know, somebody will have to make the decision as to where those remaining funds come, even though they may not get spent until next year's budget, because of the timeframe of implementation, because we're not gonna implement the two programs simultaneously, prosecutors will go first, then get up and running, then we'll start ours, and then it'll be all second, so it could be, well into October, November, December, by the time ours is finished, but both of them, agreements were made, uh, as to how they would be paid, if, you know, we would not have to pay them all of that money upfront, that we could pay them out as they did the work, as we talked about last week, so, that's, that's where that comes from. At this point in time, they do have, and LDA was very committed to the JP package of what we got, I don't know where you, you got that opinion, but, far, I know LDA was very much on board, yes, with the JP package, so...
One, one point of clarity that I had, I, I think you said it really quite eloquently, is, we need to decide what to purchase, or when to purchase, but more importantly, I think we need to decide what to purchase, and that is the key, as we compare ourselves to Dallas County, Travis County, they have budgets in excess of five hundred million dollars a year, we have fifty-ish, so just to give you a point of comparison, I mean, I'm not saying there's not a need in your office or the JP office, I'm just saying as it relates to the dollars, um, and how we can prepare, at least for what we know in terms of urgency for the clerks, I, I, obviously, I think we need to take these separate, but I think that's a discussion really for the board, and how you, how you see the priority of what would be next.
And the CUC sees that also, because our, our first line of that statement is based upon our population, so naturally, Dallas is part of that, is more because of their population, Potter County's population being way less than that, our, our commitment is way less than that, and so, of all the programs we looked at, this was the program that we voted on that, of all the programs we looked at, this pretty much was the most cost-effective. Of all the programs we looked at, this was pretty much the program they could do, at this time, especially with Randall, what they need, Tyler couldn't touch it, they couldn't do what they needed, they couldn't, they really can't do what we wanted, uh, without some more work. The, the deal that makes the CUC so good is, if you need something done, they pretty much do it, because you're only the comedian that gets it done, if you're with Tyler and you want something done, they just tell you no, because they don't care, you, you, there's no commitment there to each other, uh, I mean, you submit a request to Tyler, say, hey, I'd like this program to do this, they can say yes, or they can say, yeah, it might be five years down the road before they do that, so, that's one of the issues.
Well, I hate to muddy the water, uh, and I know that I did, coming into November, saying that I'd like it internally, but, and I hate to be flippant, but Julie and I both slept over it several times, and I think it was kind of the moment of pride that to take your time and everything, things, you know, I started looking at, at that, at this point in time, we had not seen any visible, uh, work done on the internal, I, I, they were working, and that's when we talked about now this two more, but also, I started thinking, if people are putting, like Dallas and, and Tarrant County are putting in millions of dollars to get a, a package that is not working yet, their clerk's package with the CUC is still not working, how can I be assured that our internal IT department people can build it? And so that's why I wanted to go, and I came, you know, a couple weeks ago, asking to look at, uh, uh, proposals of, of tried and true companies, and, so that, I think that's what we got right now, and I, I think it will take, I don't know how long it will take to get up, get it back.
And Jason had a death in the family, so he's not here today to his defense, because I'm sure he would really like to speak to that, I would imagine, and the work that's being done, one of the items we suggested at the court is to have a standing agenda item, just to keep the court, you know, floated, we've met, we're still vetting this out, that kind of thing, because I would agree with Commissioner Vaughn's comment, I mean, it was very confusing to have this complete shift of what we expected, what was happening behind the scenes, so, just to show a level of support, and that we're listening, um, but really help understand what the future of that might be.
We did, and we met with Jason, and we told him where we're, that we're kind of wandering off the path at this point in time, and that's whatever he did, and he and Caroline talked about the money that she could actually, you know, contribute into a project, and so he is, at this point in time, he is helping her out with being able to create the barcode and help, help ease up some of the, the pains that they're having in their office from their mandates, and, or from E filing, and I think a lot of this is that people, we, we've had all these things, that, you know, Randall's been mandated to do something, we've been mandated to do something, but, um, these are things we should have done a long time ago, so I think mandate is kind of a word to just kind of like throw out the door, because these are things that the JP needs to do his job with, these are things the DA needs and the clerk needs, and I think that that's where, um, everybody's still in the urgency right now, because you're, you know, they're going, oh, we're mandated to do all of this stuff, and, yeah, there are things that we're mandated to do, but we're also mandated to do our jobs, and so we're just trying to find the right tools that we need to do our jobs, so that when baggage does go away, and, you know, I mean, yeah, you're relying on Roland to stay around until he retires, but you have to think in the big picture, and I don't wish any ill will on anybody, but what if something happened to you? These are the things we need to take care of, and as I visited with Commissioner Vaughn the other day, y'all've got this huge mountain of things coming down on you, whether it's buildings, whether it's technology, and we're just kind of a county that's trying to catch up, so, that's just my question today.
Yeah, I think what makes it hard, and I'll, I'll stop here, Commissioner Church, is, is you're right, ultimately, the fiscal decisions fall on this court, and there is this endless list, and what we don't do well as a court, is we don't ever say no, or we don't ever say, there's not enough money, we continue to raise the tax rate, we are on the taxpayer dollar, one of the items that we're getting ready, I'm sure in the next month or so, is to evaluate the fire station property, that is well exceeding the budget, so again, we will have that same conversation, in terms of prioritizing, I'd agree with you, we're catching up, what's next, but we as a court need to be stronger about listing those priorities, because ultimately, today, there, it's operating as there's this endless pot of money, and there's not, I mean, we have a budget to help streamline to that, and I'll stop there, Commissioner Church.
Even though you say mandate's not necessarily, you know, it is a mandate for us.
Sure.
Because the court, you know, we always hear this from our tech association of candidates, that we're getting unfunded mandates from the legislature, well, this didn't come from the legislature directly, but it's an unfunded mandate from the court space, so we're gonna have to do it at some point, whether it's this minute or next winter, but, everybody knows there's not enough. But everybody knows there's not an unlimited amount of money up there. But I guess what bothers me about this, what's happening and are changing of what the LDA has recommended and gone to the LDA to, and had it approved, was it's kinda like Jason told me in this, and so I'm gonna give him credit, but it's kinda like getting married and then come home from your honeymoon and your wife tells you she wants to go live with the neighbor. There's always something better. So I don't know, I'm having trouble with switching horses here for the stream, but I'm gonna get this thing kicked off and I want, number one, I think that going with CUC is the way to do it, because we'll become a partner, we'll have the codes. We will receive some payments when other counties come in to help us with some of this money. So I'm going to move that we approve the tech share master and all over here, just to get started.
Commissioner, did you have a question?
Yeah, on the JP project, I think it's something that's gonna eventually, we're gonna have to have a package eventually. And I'm wondering what's the cost difference from now until we do acquire the package? How much difference does that make?
Do you have any second motion for discussion?
Are we gonna take a vote on that, Judge?
I don't think we should before we discuss. Are you okay with it? Can answer your question in a minute? Okay. So I have a motion and a second on the interlocal agreement. I'll pay with Richard R. Hand. Okay, so I think we had a question. If we don't buy it now, which is gonna be next year?
Well, we haven't addressed that. We haven't addressed, this dollar amount is for, and they know this, because this is the discussion we had with him, is that prosecutor would be installed first and brought up to speak to working tech local. And then at that time, and right now, that timeframe is about four months from whenever it's voted on and put in to root for. After that, four months is up, as long as they're finished, then the JP part would kick in, and that's when the payment would be, money would be made.
We would make the capital, if you approved it today, the capital payment would be made today.
For both of them.
For both of them. But the implementation for the JP would not start payments until the prosecutor would go live. So that, is that four hundred and sixty-one thousand? We wouldn't start paying on that until they actually started implementing the software for JP.
If you approved this today, this March, April, May, June, July, and then the JP would kick in, I would say August, September, October, November, December, if it would change it, it's gonna take us through to, it was our implementation of six months. So it's gonna take us through until January of next year. And that's best case scenario. So at this point, up till January of next year, that process is good. If we don't approve it until January of next year, then I can't speak to one, you can raise your hand.
As a driving question, then what would drive the cost of our waiting six months or four years?
The only thing that would drive the capital cost would be if there were more development dollars put in there, it would make our share go up to whenever we came into it. But on the other hand, if other counties joined, our share would actually go down, so it may be an offset. That's really the only thing. And then on the implementation side, there really shouldn't be anything except for increasing cost of travel, or if they hired another person, change.
The capitalization of costs, especially on population.
Population and the amount of capital cost, or the amount that's been spent altogether on the program to get it to...
That was kinda the same until that made the end for their next budget year, and we had to catch together.
The next part, yes.
And the next month, so.
But again, you've just shifted the question from one fiscal year to the next. And so then, I would imagine, a budget tied next year, if not before then, we'll be evaluating the clerk's package, and then, so you're still taking the dollars, how you slice it and dice it is what becomes the complex piece of it.
Do we have an RFP out for Tyler?
Well, we are gonna get quotes from them, yes. They already have bumper contracts, and we've already seen pricing, so I think we can kinda look at the value based on price that we've already received. That may take, that may take two or three weeks. The long part of that process is gonna be contract negotiation, because it took us two and a half months just to negotiate with the CUC, which I would say is a, is a very generous marketer to negotiate with, because you're negotiating with other county counties. It may take two or three months to negotiate with Tyler to do for final contracts.
Is that the holdup, please?
Yeah.
It's your decision. What about the district judges? Where do they stand in this? I know, I think, can they come with that? But Tyler? I mean, that's what we kinda discussed, if there would be a vengeance package, or judges vetting, sound like.
Yeah, I have a special paper for what Randall tells you.
So I'll continue.
I want to say one thing about that. I haven't seen the programs. I had called back to attention personally. The capital cost also, if Dallas is looking at it, none is, and you don't get it in, then you lose the opportunity to get some of that. Eventually, when they start giving the money back, you lose that as your capital cost fund. The capital costs are figured on the population. So that's where you get the chance to get, eventually get potentially some money back, depending on how many people die in after you're in. So there was, how much was entered out in the wallet? And how much is still in the capital fund that's unspent?
Totally was about one point eight million. You did have several people, their eye on the fire station.
And it still doesn't include the clerk's package, which we know is a hot priority.
But one thing that I don't believe was made clear in our last meeting, there is about ninety thousand dollars, I believe we agreed, in the JP technology fund that could go towards this purchase as well, and that would still leave him plenty of funds for part of their purchases.
Ninety thousand?
Without that, yes. The total fund has...
More than a little bit, let's give it.
I will proceed with item B. I would make a motion to accept or to approve the tech share prosecutor package, the sharing addendum as an interlocal agreement, and the implementation agreement as a sole source, the amount of seven hundred and fifty thousand, nineteen hundred and forty-two dollars and twenty-four cents, cost to be offset by the district attorney's office. And I would also like to include in my motion, Julie, that any revenues that we receive as a result of the project, those are encumbered in the budget to offset the maintenance and operation. And I'll say that, just to be clear, so Randall, any dollars that we get back, that potential that we can't really kind of bank on in the budget, we get that back, that goes into the budget to offset the maintenance and operation line item. And currently, that's at forty-one thousand, five twenty that's in that. So that's what that particular part of the motion is for.
Okay, I second that. The motion in a second. All in favor, Richard R. Hand. I have zero. So that exists, do the next one.
I'm gonna go ahead and move that we approved the porch JP project from now to seven hundred seventeen thousand, six hundred and forty, with the implementation agreement as a sole source agreement, ninety thousand coming from JP.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
The motion in a second. All in favor, Richard R. Hand. All in public. The only reason I'm opposing is because I just think we need to consider the court package before we go to JP. I guess you're giving it, I know you need it, that we can budget it maybe next years. Are they coming? Number sixteen, to consider an act upon purchasing the following equipment, unless you can case management software.
This is, this is the other half of the backup networking, it's basically to move the prosecutor project and the JP, but he indicated, but he still needs it whether you pass the JP one or not. So we were able to get fifty-three thousand to grant this to the other half.
Carrie, where will this come from in the budget? Is that current?
He had mentioned this morning about capital projects, I think we had some competition here.
Is this required that we take action on this today? I mean, I'd like to have Jason here to speak to where he indicates it should come from in the budget, or at least you have that.
Well, as far as budget, budget of dollars, I'm not sure on that. We do need this piece of equipment, as we do have one half of it already, so that we can finish our project for that. So as far as budget dollars, that'll be a conversation.
So I'd be happy to work with Jason over the next couple of weeks and Carrie, and bring this back on to the agenda. Everybody's okay with that?
Yeah, I don't think it's an immediate need. I mean, I can't imagine they'll be ready to go this month.
I'd be happy to do that.
Okay, so we're done, pass that for two weeks. The Cisco networking equipment, amount of six thousand thirty dollars from C and D W G.
It's the same thing.
Same thing?
Yeah, for this part, yes.
So we'll pass all of this?
Yes, yes.
Okay. Number seventeen, chiller service contract, to consider an act upon creating the attached agreement for chiller maintenance services at the district courts building, utilizing TIPS contract number six oh one two seven six, funds vested in the twenty fourteen, twenty fifteen fiscal year.
This is our chiller maintenance agreement on the district courts building. We've been operating under an agreement for the past three or four years, and actually this agreement, Carrier decided to change their contract up a little, and so they needed a new contract in place. The price is unchanged from last year, it's the exact same amount of money we paid last year, this is just the updated agreement to continue forward with that contract.
Motion?
I have a motion that we approve the agreement for the chiller maintenance services at the district courts building utilizing TIPS contract number six oh one two seven zero six.
Second that. I have a motion in second, all in favor, Richard R. Hand.
Thank you.
deployment items, to consider an act upon the tolling of government offices, extension office, the resignation, name of the car, thank you, number twenty-seven, deployment of Verna and Wagner, that is March ninth. We vote on these all at the same time. Facilities maintenance, deployment of Lawrence Baca, study one, replacement for Kenny McCreary, records management, the discharge of Lisa Daniel, transfer of Laura Arredondo, Ron Bridge, resignation of Juan Cisneros, and the designation to Kretorak. I have a motion to approve these.
Make a motion of approval.
Motion in second, all in favor, Richard R. Hand.
Judge, I will let you know that we expect to have an agenda item next for, for the branded dudes at the extension, I rely, to give an update on several of the open agent positions that we have. I'll leave your office to give that agenda.
Remember not to impound county projects.
Mike's not able to be here, but if you guys have any questions, I'll try and answer the best. Is there anything new on that fairgrounds?
Well, yeah, we finally agreed on a, engineers and large parties agreed to, and they're scheduled to come out the last week, so it's going to be eventually.
Okay, no technical session, general report, four hundred and eighty-two out of forty-two ninety-one are females, and seven hundred and one children. Kevin, you mentioned seven. Seven children. Kevin, you mentioned, I have a question. Anything for next time, is that what we're gonna come up with? If that is all, so.